It's seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
United States of America.
A nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
With liberty and justice for all.
The old business approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one are a tax. Need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February eighteen, twenty twenty-one as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
I'm staying.
Motion passes, new business, audience participation. Sarah did not receive any audience participation emails, so there are none tonight. Items for council consideration. Ordinance number ten fifty-five rezone request at zero 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 North Main Street. Property owner has applied to rezone the property from B three Regional Business District to R four Multi-Family Residential District. The zoning, if approved, would allow the property owner to develop additional multifamily housing in the area. The planning commission met on February seventeenth and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezone request. Action, I need a motion to approve ordinance ten fifty-five.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion.
Wait, wait, I'd like to make a second motion if I can.
Well, we have two.
There's already a motion on the floor.
Yeah, we have a motion, we can discuss this one, Jesse, and if you want to make another motion after that, then we can make another.
Wow, okay.
You got to discuss this one first, this procedure one.
I, well, I can tell you right now, I'll go first. Um, I'm not in favor of this, everybody knows how I feel about uh, the rental property situation in Lansing, I don't think it's getting any better, I think it's getting worse, I think we need to change in the direction. Uh, I read an article, uh, this past week, uh, that talked about how uh, property owners are more invested into the property and tenants are less invested, so they take less care of their property, which brings down the, the resale value of people's houses in the community. Uh, so I, I'm looking out for the best interest of our, our property owners of this community when I, when I'm against this project. Um, you know, I just, I've, I've talked to some people in, in the community also that, that are a little leery of approving projects with this developer moving forward because of some things in the past. Uh, recently, just last month, uh, you know, there was a proposal for a new building next to Dairy Queen, and you know, everybody was all excited about that proposal, and you know, everybody's like, tear down the building, let's get this new building built, he tore down the building, next thing you know, there's a recell sign in the property, so what happened there, I don't know. Uh, we, we vacated a right of way over here on Gamble and Ida, and it was supposed to improve the property, and as far as I'm concerned, the neighbors to the west of that property are not very happy with what's going on there, so and, uh, there's just some, some other things were mentioned to me by other members of the community. Um, you know, I'm just not very happy about that size of the rental properties, so, and you know, that, that's all I'm gonna say about it, so I'll move on.
Anyone else have any discussion, Don?
Uh, just comment, I just, more of a question than anything. Uh, this doesn't fit our land usage either, does it, or our comprehensive plan from the way I've, uh, looked at it?
That's correct. However, the planning commission voted for recommendation based on the location of it, its proximity to K seven, proximity to existing multifamily, proximity to storage units, commercial. Uh, so while it didn't, the, the plan from two thousand fourteen didn't call for it being multifamily, the planning commission felt like it fit at that location.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, could we show the, the piece up there, just so everyone's on the same page?
Marcus had a question.
Yeah. Hey.
I was just gonna pull this up, go ahead, Marcus.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of doing more multifamily homes in that particular area where there is businesses, I mean, I would like for that to remain, I concur with the two thousand fourteen business plan that Don brought up, and I, and I would like for that to be business related, and I know it's been sitting, I think I read where it's been sitting for twenty years. So, that, that, that's not an explanation as to why we haven't got more businesses there, it's right there next to IHOP, it's right there next to a, to a gas station and an Econo Lodge, I just, you know, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna bring in more of the multi-home complex living in that vicinity, I would rather that be business as it's structured to be so.
Hey, Matt, th- this is Jeremy, is it okay if I, uh, enter the conversation?
Yep, we're getting Matt's microphone.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. Yeah, I can come up here. Um, I'm sorry, Jeremy, could you repeat the question?
Well, I, I think there's maybe a little bit of confusion in what's actually being requested in this rezoning. Um, because the area in the people are talking about in reference to the IHOP is already zoned multifamily. So we're not, we're not looking to rezone the corner across from IHOP because it got rezoned to multifamily years ago.
That's correct.
There, there just seem, there just seems to be s- some confusion about the piece that's actually being requested. A, a, and maybe I'm reading, maybe I'm reading this wrong.
Well, and that's, and that's why we pulled the map up, so, on the map that's on everybody's screen right now, the lot that's got the number two on it, it's already zoned as R four.
I can't hear you, man. I can't hear you.
The one that's south of the one highlighted is already zoned multifamily, the one that's highlighted right now is being split off from Econo Lodge, that's the one that's business.
Okay, so that, is that the reason why, if it's already been zoned multifamily, is that the reason why it's not already been built multifamily? Uh, they're waiting to make this multifamily too, that's in the, that's in the block, is that what we're talking about doing?
The, the applicant, his intent is to make a larger project by combining these two together. Um, you know, he, when he started looking at what he could do with what's shown on your screen as Lot Two, he considered that the property to the north could be developed with this to make it a larger project. And so then he approached Econo Lodge, Econo Lodge agreed to sell part of their property in order for that project to be larger, and then, so now we're in the step of needing to rezone that piece of property from Econo Lodge so that it matches the zoning that's currently on Lot Two, so that he can then move forward with the full development.
So is the development gonna look uh, what is to the west of this picture, is that what he's looking to do, is continue with what's already to the west and add to it, is that the plan?
Do you mean to the east, to the west, as he tunnel?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, to the other west.
So across this, across Santa Fe Drive, those are apartments, I believe, Jeremy could probably speak more to that as well.
Well, Matt, Matt, I'm happy for you to show our, it's kind of the, some of the preliminary, um, I, I know we're kind of jumping ahead here, but I think it might help, help illustrate what, what our thoughts are. Um, do you have that preliminary site plan that we've, uh, gone over with you?
I, I don't have the preliminary site plan, it was included in the packet, the preliminary plot was, that shows the overall layout. Um, I, I'd be perfectly frank, I get a little nervous about showing, building elevation.
I, no, I, I, yeah, I, I, okay, well, then let's just hold off on it, and I'll just address it, and it'll show up here in the next half an hour or so. The, the plan right now is, uh, three unit buildings, so across the street you have twelve unit buildings. Um, what we're proposing is a series of, uh, three unit buildings on phase one and, and likely to continue throughout phase two.
Matt, I got a question. The, the area to the east of the highlighted area, between the road and the highlighted area, what is that?
That's actually Old Railroad Right Of Way, that's currently shown on the county's GIS as being city-owned right of way. Um, I think Jeremy Surveyor has found some additional information on who actually owns that property.
That, that's correct, our, our engineer is on the Zoom call, or at least was planning on, if he could address it, uh, better than I could, so Matt, if you're, Matt Henderson, if you're available.
If you're talking, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry, Matt Henderson here, I, I, it's having a harder time on muteing. Yeah, the, the county's JS, uh, mapping is not accurate here, that, that property was owned by the condo tell to this, to the west, and so that, the property is, the rezoning legal description incorporates that ground as part of this, so I think what, the exhibit you're seeing is probably a parcel that, that Matthew Schmidt's picked on, but really, the, the rezoning is, is gonna go up to the, basically, road right of way of Santa Fe, which is, you know, probably ten to fifteen feet off, off the back of that edge of road.
That's correct, what's on the screen is the GIS provided by Leavenworth County, and basically the parcel boundary isn't really correct.
Hey, a- and all of that was discovered when we got into the title work?
I have another, I have another comment. Uh, I guess a resident called, uh, to express some concerns about the proper, project on this property and the concerns about the trees. Um, you know, we discussed probably at least six months ago about, you know, looking at projects moving forward like this and having a site plan showing every tree taken out and every tree putting back in place, and I have yet to have a discussion about that with anybody, and I know that a resident called with concerns about these trees, and if we're gonna maintain our Tree USA status in the city, we need to be careful about how many trees, uh, developers are allowed to level and replace in the city.
Hey, I really don't know the qualifications for what makes tree city USA or, or anything like that, but I mean, I, the, the flip side of that though, Jesse, I mean, we, we demolished a lot of trees when we built that sewer line too, so I mean, I-
I know. Yeah, I know, we, we've developed, we've demolished a bunch of trees lately, and that's concerning for some people, you know.
Miss, or Commissioner Garvey, oh, can, can, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Um, there are some cities that, um, address the issues that you're talking about, but we currently don't have any ordinances um, or zoning regs that would cover what you're talking about, to my knowledge. Um, I know some other cities have, um, before you can clear, let's say, a forested area, you may have to have some mitigation um, concerns, but again, that would have to be driven by policy regs and/or ordinances to do so, but right now, unless Matt can tell me that there's something out there I'm not thinking of at the moment, I don't think we have any enforceable, um, type, um, guidelines or anything to follow that would prevent that, you know, for that, that property to be um, built up to, in the same, as long as they're doing the technical specs and they're doing it according to our code, I don't think that we can really interject that or overlay that at this time.
So there are regulations within the Unified Development Ordinance related to landscaping requirements, but it is not a one-to-one ratio for, there's nothing that says for every tree you take out, you have to put back a tree. It's not quite that clear or that, that easy, yes.
So is that something we can look at changing someday, I mean, we, we have work sessions all the time, can we put that on a work session in the future?
Yes.
Yes, we can, certainly. Um, I, I just wanna add something though, when we're talking about development, so, you know, one of the, I guess, best practices when you're trying to buffer between businesses and homes is multifamily. Um, multifamily sitting right on that corner, so extending it into two B, to me, does, I don't think you're gonna have multifamily right here in a business and sit in the middle of, of that park, I mean, I, I, so, consideration is, we both, you know, you already have the corner as being um, multifamily, so I mean, if, if the determination by the governing body tonight is that we don't want to do it in two B, um, you know, the state's still gonna do it in two, or can do it in two.
Well, hey, Tony, I, I don't, I don't think you will. I mean, that's, that's the whole reason. Um, that property that we're talking about, two, two A versus two B, has been sitting vacant for a long time, and he took the initiative, and I applaud him for occupa, uh, to, to work out and purchase that land, or however, from Econo Lodge to do that. But, I, I mean, I'm not in favor of putting more multi-family homes right up against, close to our businesses, I just, and if that land sits empty and he sells it and we rezone that to business, that corner, then he puts businesses in there. But that, that's not a justification to me to, to put, well, it's already multifamily, let's put some multifamilies in there, I, I, I concur completely, that's, that's not what I want.
I'm not making the point that, what I'm making the point is, that bottom section is already multifamily, so.
Yeah, I got you.
It's not.
I got you. I understand.
I, I, I guess I still question that section right there that I asked you about earlier, because I know years ago, when the railroad took out the tracks and abandoned the, the railroad right of way, the city inherited a bunch of property, and I know that the city inherited some property through here, so where did the city's property go to?
Uh, Commissioner or Councilmember, when that, um, railroad right of way was abandoned, it actually, at that time, if you recall, I mean, I know this is a while back, a lot of cities got very eager, they were thinking about all these trailheads they were gonna be able to build and have all these parks and all these things of walking, however, somebody did take it to, I believe it's Kansas Supreme Court, and all that property reverts back to the landowner. Wherever the original land was taken from, it goes back, in this case, it would, as you look at that lot that shows as two, you see if that bottom line there snugs up to the road, right?
Uh-huh.
I think that's what Mr., if I got his name right, Mr. Henderson was referring to, that orange or yellow line will probably, at the end of the day, gonna extend down there and almost go down to that corner. Now, I can't speak to exactly where it's gonna go, but it should be about, uh, fifteen feet off that road line, you see, so,
Right.
Whatever that adjusts to, but that will revert, all that land reverted back to, um, the, the property owners on both sides, actually, so. And that's where I think Matt can speak to a little bit about why some of that is the cities, at the end of the day, you're gonna see that right of way still on that, um, snug up on our side of our roadway, so.
Doc, I got a question. Gary?
Yep.
Minimize?
Yeah. We're gonna minimize the map and then go back to the Zoom quick.
Sorry, guys, I can't see anybody with their hand up, please talk.
I think Gene had a question.
Okay, yes, did somebody else have a question or wanted to say something?
I do. So, so I guess what I'm hearing is, we don't want to put apartments in there, multifamily, whatever you wanna call them, because the neighbors don't, some neighbors don't want it, but they're gonna be okay with businesses? I mean, it's gonna be one or the other eventually, isn't it? Not gonna stay green forever.
That's a good point, Gene. I, I don't know what the answer is, I, I don't know.
Well, you gotta get ready to invest some money, uh, and that's one of the things we keep hearing about, drawing and attracting businesses is rooftops. And, you know, I, I just don't see, I just don't see what the difference will be, whether it's multifamily apartment or businesses, I mean, we know what we went through with Harbor Freight, so. I guess one of the things I keep hearing too, is, as we keep comparing our city to, to Baser, we wanna be Baser, you know, because Baser's a growing city, and, and if you drive through Baser, you don't see residential rental properties like, like we're talking about doing here. You don't see little pop-up rental neighborhoods like we're talking about, like he put in a gamble in Idaho, like he's putting over here. You don't see those because they don't want those in their community, they want houses that are owned by people that are investing into the commu- community. You know, they want businesses like that, you know, uh, we're, we're supposed to be a bedroom community here, you know, I, I want people who are gonna take care of their property and stuff like that.
Well, if we get, if we get some box stores or something in here, we, we're gonna have to have, uh, places that people can rent or live, that's making minimum wage a little better too, Jesse. Where we gonna put them, not everybody can afford a three hundred thousand dollar home.
Isn't that why Mark, why don't you ever build those houses?
It doesn't make a person any better or any worse if you rent your own. I mean, I, you know, I don't want, I don't want anybody in the city of Lansing come out and thinking that, me is on this, I don't, I can't speak for the rest of you guys, but thinking that just because you rent, that you're the wrong kind of person for Lansing, I, I don't, I don't, I don't believe that. When we first got married, we couldn't afford a house out here, we were in it. I lived here all my life, and then, then I had to rent, and then I went back to owning again, so, it, it's, I, I don't know, it's fifty one, half a dozen the other, that ground's been vacant for a long time, and it was back twenty years ago, that was the idea, to make it multifamily. I don't see why we should change what we're, what we were looking at doing, and I think it needs to just proceed right along with what we're doing today. That's supposed to be the thing, is the multifamily is supposed to be the buffer now, isn't that not right, Matt? They're, they're talking about multifamily, the, the buffer, buffer between business and, and, and the, the new thing, there was an article.
Yeah, generally multifamily is seen as a buffer between commercial areas and residential areas.
I thought now that, now they, they're using multifamily as the buffer. And, you know, they, 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 they don't want, where you gonna put it, people don't want multifamily, you don't want multifamily, where you gonna put them, out by the set, the transfer station? I mean, people deserve to live in just the quality of life just like anybody else, just because they own or they rent. And I, you know, I don't, I, I don't know, I, I got mixed feelings on, on some of the, on some of that, but.
Well, Dave, we just need to go back and relook the, the planning zone that was passed in two thousand fourteen that Dave Trinkle brought up, and it was passed to make that business. And now we're saying, not business, make it residential, and, and I'm not arguing with what you're saying, what I'm saying is, is you all or whoever was in the seat made that business for a reason. And I'd like to know what that reason was, and I think before we vote on something tonight, we need to go back and relook that for the way ahead in the plan for Lansing. Versus, you know, we have a plan in place and we don't even, we, we're going against it.
Yeah, I don't like, I don't like the change, that, that is what bothers me the most.
We, Matt, you can speak to that area for the-
Yeah, the, the one thing that I would point out is the future land use map is a guide, it is not a hard set, fast rule for how things are to be developed in the city, it's a guide to help guide development as it comes into the city. So, um, there's plenty of other examples across the city where something was planned to be one thing, and then a developer came in and decided that they wanted to build something that didn't match the future land use map, and we've changed that in the past. So, I don't, I guess that's the only thing I would say, is it is a guide, it's not a hard fast rule that it has to meet that.
And if you, if you all, some of you will recall that, once we passed that, you know, there are several of us who, who had issues with it as it sat currently, for that very reason, there was areas that we were like, why is it this? And you know, I mean, the comeback is, we do things like this, we rezone, right, to meet our needs um, as a city, so, I mean, that's part of what we can do, is rezone, so, I'm not sure that corner there was, was it B three as well and we rezoned that to R four, or was that R four in the comprehensive plan, do you know, Matt?
My memory is telling me that that was B three, and it was recently in the last couple of years, in the last, in the three years that I've been here, rezoned to R four. I think you're right, I think it was two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen when that was rezoned from commercial to resi- multifamily residential.
Okay, Don, you got something?
Uh, the only comment I make about zoning is that, I've been on a council a while, when Econo Lodge went in there and they bought that property, I believe we rezoned it, we rezoned it or zoned it B three at that time, that was way back when. And then now that we've had our new comprehensive plan and whatever things, you know, things have changed, but that's why that whole area in there was B three, commercial, basically. If that makes sense to you.
Yes, it does. Anybody else have any questions or discussion?
One thing that I, I'd like Matt to clarify too, um, since the planning commission recommended this, doesn't it, it would require a super majority to overrule the planning commission, is that accurate, Matt? Yes, so procedurally, in order for the city council to overrule the recommendation of the planning commission, it would have to fail, or, then, you know, the motion would be to deny by a super majority vote, meaning six people would have to vote no in order for it to fail.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second.
All right, Mr. Stednica?
No.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
No.
Mr. Garvey?
No.
Mr. Bueller?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
No.
That was five, no, it's not, not a three, so, do we?
It's not a super, it's only five.
Yeah, we can, we'll consider another motion on this. So, uh, somebody make another motion? No, Jesse, you don't wanna make a motion?
Well, I, I make a motion, we deny the applicant, uh, to rezone the property at zero 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 North Main Street from B three to R four.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all roll.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
No.
Mr. Kirby?
No.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Braggart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, item number three, preliminary plat for Santa Fe Townhomes. This item is informational only, once the final plat has been reviewed by the planning commission, it will come to a future council meeting. Matt, um, is going to, uh, are you just available if you have any questions on the preliminary plat that you guys got in your pack?
Still relevant?
Yeah. It's not relevant anymore, is it?
That proportion of it is, isn't it?
It's, it's up to the applicant at this point whether they would wanna proceed with it or not, he could continue to proceed with the plat and do just phase one on the property that's already zoned as R four. So it's really up to the applicant, we'll talk over the next week what he wants to do, you know, as far as how he wants to move forward. Um, yeah, the preliminary plat is just for information only, it's to show what was approved by the planning commission. Since the rezoning has failed, or, you know, was denied, um, it'll be up to the applicant to either modify the preliminary plat or to pull it all together, at his, his discretion.
Any questions on that? No? Reports. City Attorney.
Um, Mr. Mayor, the only, I know there was some discussion, this is, uh, somewhat germane to what was talked about earlier. Um, one of the things that I keep hearing being brought up is about restricting, um, apartments, okay? So if that is gonna be, I think it needs a, a policy discussion, because there has to be a rational basis to restrict a certain segment of development. So if we're going to continue to discuss restricting or eliminating multifamily housing in our community, um, then all the R four or any of the multifamily zoned areas to date, um, to place any type of moratorium or anything like that on that construction or development of those properties is going to take quite the study to determine how that adversely impacts our community financially. Um, so it would require quite the study, I think, that would be in support, or some other factor that somebody else may be thinking of. If, if there's gonna be, like, I've heard the discussion about how it, um, decreases home values, well, that, that can't just be anecdotal, it has to be based by some kind of-
It has to be based by some kind of rational fact finding study to determine before I would, because otherwise the city will be opening itself up to quite the litigation on those type of things. So I just would caution the council that if, if this is what its policy is to be, or they want to continue that discussion, that, that this be done at either a, a study session or something of that nature to discuss what it would take to then proceed with a policy like that.
Good, thanks. The Administrator.
Mask requirement expires on March 31st. Uh, so for the March 18th meeting, I'm going to ask you guys for direction as far as if you guys want us to draft an update to expand that for another month or two or, or what you guys want us to do. Um, so be chewing on that for the next couple of weeks. If you guys want to expand that, I'll try to reach out to neighboring communities to find out what they're doing as well. Um, you know, another thing I want to mention, um, in, uh, 2018, 2019, you guys might remember, uh, we knew QuickTrip was coming and, uh, we knew we needed to update some sewer lines in that neck of the woods. Um, so I know this body made the decision to update that Eisenhower sewer line so we could service QuickTrip, service that western property and service Aldi, because if you guys remember, that was, that was on a grinder pump. Um, and at that point, um, you know, we took bids, we engineered the project and it was around $279,000. And I know you guys talked at that point, two or three years ago about our return on investment and, uh, and all of that. And, uh, now that we've got a little bit more data and we know generally what the car wash is going to, uh, to generate wastewater wise, uh, we look at that as paying for itself in less than nine years. Uh, so we feel like that's a really positive investment for the city. We feel like it was a really solid project from a financial standpoint, but also from a planning standpoint too. It was really terrific to see Matt Schmitz coming together with Tony Zell and Mike Spickelmeier just to make sure the ED component, the wastewater component, public works component, make sure all of those things met. Uh, so major kudos to those three guys. Uh, but also, like I said, really proud that the return on investment for that project is under nine years. So, uh, really positive project and, uh, I just thought that was something I wanted to pass along to you all. That's all.
All right, Don Stoudnica.
Uh, just two items, Mayor. Uh, number one, sorry, I didn't put my city background up, but you saw what it looked like. My computer won't support it, I guess. So all it looked like, well, I had two blue eyes out of the dark, so I don't know what that meant. Uh, the other thing I want to comment on is I picked up my copy of the Eastern Gateway, uh, proposal or the study. Uh, I started reading through that, uh, very excited about that. They, uh, did a great job on this. I think if there's any way we can, uh, uh, support the movement forward of, uh, making that connection and the new bridge, et cetera, we ought to try to help if we can. That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Don. Abe?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Hey, Dave. Thank, Dean.
I'm good, thank you.
Hi, Dean. Marcus?
Hey, I'd just like to echo what Don Stoudnica said. That was a great study and it was a great Zoom, uh, presentation they gave us. And, uh, I'm looking forward to our city working to get that bridge network going and, uh, and start bringing in a lot more traffic over. That's all I've got, Mayor.
All right, thanks, Marcus. Jesse?
Yeah, there are a lot of states coming out of their mandates right now. Texas, I think next week goes full-fledged back to normal. And there's some other states down in the southeast that are just taking the masks off and just going back to normal because they just, they're tired of it. Everybody's over this COVID. I realize it's still a danger out there and that some people still need to get vaccinated and, and we still need to, you know, manage our, our distance and things like that. But I think we need to leave it up to the, the people, how safe they want to be. I mean, when, when it comes to driving on the highway, if someone's scared to drive on the highway, they need to stay off the highway and let me drive. I mean, I just, I'm glad, I'm, I'm glad that some states are, are ready to get back to normal. That's all I've got.
All right, thanks, Jesse. Well, we can get some, uh, information to you on the numbers, uh, on how they're going up or down or where we're at. I think Marcus probably has all the numbers, but, uh, if you could share those. Um, Greg?
Yeah, the other thing that I have is on this day in 1861, Abraham Lincoln was inaugurated as the 16th President of the United States. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Greg. Ron? You're up, Ron.
Just like, uh, just like to thank Tony and his staff, uh, for the tour they gave me today. Very informative and actually with the weather, it was very enjoyable. So I just want to, just want to thank them for, uh, for their hospitality. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Gary?
Uh, Mayor, I want to thank, uh, Matt Schmitz. He met with me today, couldn't help me with my screen, my background. But it did make me feel better because, uh, I knew if he couldn't do it, he's real techie. And, uh, if he couldn't do it, then, uh, probably no one could.
Sure.
So, uh, the other thing, um, Jesse, I understand, I, I totally get it. I'm, I'm sick of COVID and sick of wearing the mask and everything, but we are at the tail end of this.
Right?
I just, I just want to just caution us to think about this. Right now, I know two people, uh, critical condition in the hospital, uh, not sure if they're going to live. So it's very real still. We're still losing 2,000 people a day. And I'm sorry, just because Texas does it, I don't care. I don't care what Texas does. I think it's a mistake, that's my feeling. And we're not going to take our marching orders from Texas. So, um, I usually go get a map like this, but, you know, I, whether Texas gets their ban doesn't matter.
Just say it, Gary. Just say it. Hook 'em horns, Gary.
Rock chalk, baby.
Is that all you had, Gary?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Your last.
Oh, I'm sorry. And with that, I move adjourned.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, call roll.
Mr. Stoudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
You're adjourned and you're, you're only last in the roll call, Gary.
Okay.
Have a good weekend, everybody.
Have a good weekend, everybody.
Have a good weekend.